Stand your foot. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Full call. Trustee Winston?
Here.
Trustee Carville?
Here.
Trustee Reer?
Here.
And I'm here. Trustee Simpson is excused. He is at a meeting regarding his employment. He said he might try and make it back, but he's not sure if he's going to be here. So with that, first thing, we have a presentation. Our health insurance renewal is coming up. And so we're going to have Zach and Don present for us. So guys, if you're ready, we would be have our full attention.
Would you like me to come here?
Wherever you
I'll just stay.
Wherever you're comfortable.
All right. Yeah. So those of you that don't know me, Zach, except for many from USI Insurance Services. Throughout the year, we have come up and met with the mayor, a couple of labor representatives, the nonprofit health insurance office that are out there. Well, Exelis just released their renewal rate for 2023. And we have the final rates. We've got a couple of different options that we wanted to present. In this chart, if you will, the first page illustrates your current program on the left-hand side, if you can see that. Your current program is called Platinum Two. It's a product name issued by Exelis Blue Cross Rescue. All right. Platinum means is that it has an actuarial value of 90% coverage. All right. You can see down at the bottom that the rates are for 2022. And your enrollment, when you multiply your enrollment time the rates, the annualized premiums, these are gross premiums. At the village's age, $3 million. At renewal, Exelis has released a renewal at 8.6% more than what you're paying in 2022. The rates go up a little bit. And it's about $260,000. So the 8.6% increase is about $260,000. One of the options that we focused on a lot while we were meeting with the labor representatives was this bronze plan. Exelis Bronze Four. What it does is it pushes the deductibles higher. So everybody would now would have a $7,000, actually $7,500 high deductible plan. That means everything goes towards the deductible. So prescriptions, major medical hospitalization, all goes towards that $7,500 deductible. All right. After that deductible, Exelis Blue Cross Rescue pays in full. So it goes 100% employee paid, 100% insurance company paid after $7,500. As you can see, the rates drop 43%. What we've talked about in our meetings is what if we took that 43% savings and funded that deductible entirely for the employees? So if we said, all right, we, the village, will assume the risk of the health of our employees. And if they have to use this deductible, we will pay it. We will pay that deductible in its entirety, $7,500. What happens to that financially? Well, if we go to the next page, try to make some sense of this. Over on the top left-hand side, you can see the number of covered employees. That literally comes from the prior page. Adds up singles and families. We told the spreadsheet over on the right-hand side that we were going to reimburse $7,500 per employee and $15,000 per family. Those are the maximum exposures an employee could have under the health insurance program. So we were saying, we're going to pay 100% of the coverage. We have to hire an administrator to administer that plan. It's called a health reimbursement arrangement or an HRA. So you pay, in this case, Lifetime Benefit Solutions, $4.95. You multiply that by the 119 covered people that you have on the plan annually. It's about $7,000 that you're going to pay Lifetime Benefit Solutions to administer. So then we say, all right, well, what's the risk? If we add 30 employees on the plan at $7,500 and 89 families at $15,000, what's the total? Well, the total is down here in this middle column, potential HRA funding employer liability. At 100%, it's $1.5 million.
So that means if each and every one of our employees used every bit of their deductible, each and every single one of them.
Yes.
That would cost $1.56 million towards us.
Yep.
How often do you use every seat?
Never. Thank you. It won't. Actuarially, it won't. I guess it could be actuarially, it won't. And in fact, what we find is that you'll spend about 60% or so of that money. That's the statistic that we talked about. Oftentimes, the higher you increase that deductible, the lower the percentage will go. Like if our actuary was here, he might even suggest you only spend 45% because it's a higher deductible. All right? But when we carry this down, and I'll explain to you how it works, we show 100% to kind of show worst-case scenario. Everybody gets sick and you spend all the money. All right? 75%, 60%, 50%. Obviously, 60% is in there for a reason. That's what we think it's going to be. All right? And then 50% is slightly below that. The middle part here, the health plan premiums, this comes from the other page. This just shows monthly what you pay today versus what you will pay through the bronze program and then the differential. All right? So you save $1.2 million in annual premiums by going to this high deductible health plan. So down below, we show, all right, what's the total savings? All right? You can see if you used 100% of the HRA funds, it would cost the village. All right? If you used 75%, you save 3%, almost 4. If your utilization happens as we would expect it, you'll save 11% or $340,000. And if it's about 50%, you'll save almost a half a million dollars in annualized premiums or 16, almost 17%. So, you know, we, again, we've talked about this. The good news is likely we'll save everybody. In fact, this is their current benefits. If you go back to the first page, we just take a look at the benefit designs. Like right now, they all have office visit co-payments, $15 for primary care, 25 for specialists. They all got prescription drug co-payments of $5.35, $70. Well, those will go to zero. They'll be paying full.
Zach, let me ask you a question on that because I'm sure employees would be interested. On average, how much does, do we know, how much does an individual pay in co-pays?
We don't.
Okay.
No. So
I know what I pay.
Right. Without going too deep into this, so there are fewer than 100 lives in New York State Exelis has to live through with community rating. So they don't take into account the village's claim experience themselves and they're not going to report out on it because they build this Platinum Two plan for the entire community. So anybody who chooses Platinum Two has these rates. So therefore, they went zero creditability. Like if you bridged 100 eligible employees, they would call you what's called the experience rating. And then they might be able to give me that information. And then they would be able to supply me the information. But right now, we're community rated and I don't get any claims to be on.
And I'm just going to kind of go through the litany of what I think we're going to hear if, if we do this. One of the big things with each contract that we have, there's a specific language in there that says we can move to an insurance plan as long as it's equal to or better than I should.
Yes.
I should.
Yeah.
And even the current one that we have. So would you be comfortable in saying that the bronze plan for an employee is actually better than our current plan?
With the HRA funding?
Yes.
Absolutely. It's 100% covered.
Yeah. So now, those employees and retirees that are on it as well, they would not have any co-pays whatsoever. If they contribute a percentage rate, they're going to go down. As a matter of fact, I was talking to one of our employees who's on the family plan who contributes 8%. That person would save in the neighborhood of $1,500, not including no longer having deductibles.
Yeah.
Is that per year?
Per year.
$1,500 per year.
Is this covered all employees, retired and residents working or just some working people?
Active and early retirees. So pre-Medicare.
Retired is pre-Medicare.
Yeah. Once they become Medicare, it's where they jump over to a different plan. It's underwritten by United Healthcare.
Zach, question about page two on the savings.
Yes.
You used current plan cost minus this potential new plan. Wouldn't the actual savings be even greater because we'd be looking at the renewal rate?
Yes.
Minus this current plan?
Yes. It's a huge debate. We go through all the time. It's like, well, shouldn't we show them what the renewal would be and then discount? Most people, you know, they talk to the Catholic, yeah, but I pay this today. So we, you know.
Sure.
Yes, we compare it to where it is today's number. But yes, the option is higher premiums or not.
It is the rate that you have for option one. Is that current or is that what they're proposing?
It's 2023.
Okay.
Yeah.
So I'm pretty sure if you were to do the math, even at 100% utilization, which is not going to happen with the HRA, you're not looking at loss or if you are, it's minimal. I didn't do the math fully, but I like this type of approach. I think this is the way the village has to start looking at these types of expenses creatively without impacting the employees. I mean, yes, it's different. Yes, there would be the reimbursement aspect, but we have the company. We've utilized them in the past, you know, for different things. Education's key, you know, that's why we have folks like you involved with this. But if we can save even $200,000, you know, and it is important on this first page for everyone to realize that 1.3 million is not our savings. That's the difference in cost before the HRA. You know, so it gets communicated back, you know, to everyone. It's important that we're not saving 1.3 million. But we are looking at potential savings of 100, 200, 300,000 dollars. And that's critical long-term because we only have so much revenue. And if we want to avoid equipment cuts, job cuts, position cuts, this is the way to go. It's getting creative, giving the same level of benefit, just in a different way, a different road. So I appreciate your efforts on putting together and I appreciate the mayor bringing it forward.
I believe one of the conversations that came up in the last meeting was Bronze Four is the highest high deductible plan that Exelis offers. So this is it. This is the one time, right? Like we get to take a little money on the table. After that, it's as high as we get unless we hire more people and get to experience rating on that episode. This is the last real move.
And it's the same network, correct?
Yep.
Blue Cross Rescue.
All the same coverages and something.
Worry about, oh, I see doctors, so currently will they take this? It would be the same.
And it checks the boxes for me, you know, the three things that it would have to do. First, it has to save the village money. It does. Second, it saves the employees money. It benefits them, you know, it does. And the third thing is legally, can we do this? We can with the contracts, in my opinion. That's not to say that our unions are going to fully agree with this. I understand sometimes there's disagreements, but in this case, I think we're
It's a win-win.
It is. It truly is. It's, yeah, it's when you're saving some of your employees upwards of $1,500, it's tough. And the one thing I think that I worry about, people are going to say, well, how can you say this is a better plan when it's called bronze, but this one is called platinum? And you just have to explain to them, well, in the market for it, if you as an individual went out and did this, yeah, you're going to pay $7,500, but we're going to pay that and still save money. So that's how we rationalize it. I just, I know that's going to be kind of, a bone's going to ring at some point. And that's the explanation that people are going to hear.
Would that require a little bit of education for the employee?
Absolutely.
Because it's going to be a change. And you know, there's always a lot of fear because of the change or whatever. But as they're educated on how to go about this and
If we pass this in October, at the October meeting, I would like to set up meetings with each bargaining unit where we say, okay, three nights this week, you and your spouse, please, because if you're anything like the Payman household, it's a net that does the insurance and everything else, mind you. You want the spouses there as well to understand how this works. So we need to make sure we do a very good job of educating both our current employees and our early retiring employees, those that are still on this plan until they get to the American. But yeah, absolutely, Francis, great.
And, you know, the reimbursements of Lifetime Benefit Solutions is a division of Exelis. So they own the administrator. So the way that we would set it up would be for all the medical claims, Exelis will send a weekly feed directly to Lifetime Benefit Solutions. If the employee authorizes it, Lifetime Benefit Solutions will direct deposit the cash money into the employee's checking account that they authorize. The employee will then pay the check to their provider. But it happens like you get the bill and you have the money. It's not, it's not a, I have to pay and get reimbursed and stuff like that. It happens.
I thought also there's the option where they can get a card.
A debit card, yes. We can do that. And in fact, we'll have to do that for prescriptions.
Okay. I almost think it would be, I think a big selling point on this would be it's much easier. You go to the doctor, here's my card, swipe, and you don't have to worry about anything. You just, it's paid. You don't have to worry about a transfer to your checking account. It's paid.
We can talk through it however you want. We can give them a card with $7,500 on it. What I have found, just through experience, believe it or not, no matter how many times you sit down with them and their spouses, somebody will have two cards, a debit card with $7,500 on it and a Blue Cross Rescue card with $7,500 deductible. They'll go into their provider and just pay with the debit card. So it doesn't accumulate towards the deductible. All of a sudden, they'll be out of money over here and have a full deductible. Right? So the debit card creates some issues. The convenience is awesome. It creates issues at some point.
Make it pink.
What's that?
Make it pink so they know, oh, this is the one.
Yeah, that's it. It, it, we need it for prescriptions. Pharmacy doesn't let you out of the store without prescriptions. You need a debit card to be able to front one for prescriptions. But for the medical side, my experience is that if you do it the electronic way, it's just, it's simple and easy.
Yeah.
But, but seeing as it's dollar for dollar, it might just be just as simple to use a debit card as well. We can talk about that. That's in like setup and stuff.
Any other questions for Zach? Zach, our intention is to put this on the agenda for October. You don't need to drive all the way back up here, but then we can start setting up educational nights and such for our employees.
Yeah.
If it's passed.
And if anybody asks questions, I've been pretty involved for a long time. If anybody has questions about anything.
Great. Thank you so much.
I appreciate it.
Thank you. Okay. So on with the meeting, we have item number three, approval of the meeting minutes for July 19th and July 27th, 2022. So moved by trustee Reer, second by trustee Carville in the discussion room. See, non-hallows in favor?
Aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carried. Report of officers and committees. Treasurers' report.
Hello, everybody. By now, I should have everything in the bins for you for the August reports and projections. I think it should be there and distributed to everybody, including departments. So you can see the summary as well as the Risk Squad summary. Number three, AUD for the village has not been completed. I am now working on completing the last, I'm hoping in this week, I should have the last of my year-end accruals done. And as of right now, I can delete the AUD for the Joint Rec and get that submitted. So I think that goal should be done by the end of the week. Then, once I get everything finalized, I can start working on the AVD starting next week. So that shouldn't get caught up. Once I get that done, then I just have to start working on the financial statements. I do expect this year is going to be a more complicated year because of the stimulus money that we were receiving. So we have to do a single audit, which is going to take more work and more expensive for the auditors. So that will be coming. Number three, through the close of business for September 19th, we've collected $6,109,853, about 90% of the adjusted tax warrant. This is a little bit skewed again this year because of the re-leveys for the water that did not happen last year. That happened this year. So that kind of throws that number off a little bit. That's why last year we're looking higher. But the total warrant is going to be higher this year because of those re-leveys that got put in this year. As a reminder, we stopped collecting September 30th and turned everything over to the county. They collect in October and November. The labor is unpaid. Get re-leveied out of the town and county bill in January. New York State Retirement, number four, release the rates for the coming year.
Kevin, a quick question.
Yes.
Forgive my ignorance. A15, who's that?
That is a, it's like a plan type. So you have the plan. I kind of included this more so for me than it is for you guys.
But I guess what I'm asking, is that DPW employees?
No, no, this is the, within the tier four, there's different plan types. And we're in the A15. And then there's an additional option. The 41K is a 0.1% addition. So it's just, it keeps it clear for me when I'm trying to determine what the rates actually are, knowing what plan ID we have. And just like in the police and fire, there's, you got tier five that contribute, not contributory. And then there's a 34, 34D both ways. So that's the complexity of these plans. So you can see on average, it's running just over a percent and a half roughly for everybody for next year, which is consistent between ERS and DFRS. Number five, we received the village's apportionment for the 2324 workers' comp bill from the county. So we'll be budgeting for next year 271,480, which is a slight decrease of 2129 from this year. And finally, I've got the three action items, the budget allocations. First one is the DPW superintendent requesting to recognize the revenue that we received from the donation of the reunion, mega reunion. We received $10,000 for that, that had been used to repair and rejuvenate the gazebo. So his, obviously, his increased in specs and expenses is going to be utilizing the $10,000 revenue to offset it. So it's a wash. So we need to increase the 7110400 account and then as well the revenue account, which is the 1002705 account.
Entertained a motion?
Second.
Mr. Carville, second. Mr. Winston, discussion?
Superintendent, do you have the capacity, your crew, to do this work?
Yeah, we're just about.
Okay. Perfect.
Any other questions? All hollows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Next?
The Joint Rec Director is looking to request an increase in his town beach account, equipment account. The 57140, 200-712 by $14,670 to purchase a Ferris variety mower that will be reimbursed by 95. The revenue will be received in the revenue account 500-2390, 000-010 for that same amount. So once he, I believe, can buy it, he turns that in and it'll reverse for it. So this recognizes the revenue and increases his expense to purchase it.
Entertained a motion? So moved by trustee Reer, second by trustee Carville. Any other questions?
He, I'm assuming, has a absolute that it will be reimbursed. It's not a, we're pretty sure.
No, I believe it's, they've already, he usually gets compensated first before he does that. Sorry.
Who else? All hollows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carry.
Last one, the same thing. Joint Rec Director looking to appropriate unspent fund balance for the 2122 fiscal year to cover an expense for the alcohol field cameras that he budgeted back in the 2122 fiscal year, but was not able to complete it, to complete the purchase because of supply issues of being able to get them. So that money essentially flowed to fund balance. So he's looking to appropriate that money to spend it this year out of fund balance.
May or did it miss?
Which one?
Number three.
I think, I think he shuffled money around to be able to buy it. I don't know. I think that was shuffling money to be able to buy it and then he wasn't able to buy it. So it flowed to fund balance, which we now have to appropriate this mess here.
Is that the total cost for the cameras?
I don't know. But he just gave me that figure.
Sorry, I got ahead. So moved.
Moved by trustee Reer, second.
Second.
Trustee Winston, Francis?
Yes. Well, supposedly, this is a, what they're spending is a grant. And it came in a little bit over $500,000. So we need, because $3,000 probably needed to cover, but it was in the unspent grant part. So it's up in the other part.
That's what we were told. I don't know.
We were told it expires November 1st, so they have to use that grant money anyway for what we were told, so.
Anything else? All hollows in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carried. Thanks, Kevin.
That is all I have. Do we have any questions? Oh, one other thing that did not make it out of here is today, we received the money for the ambulance of five. So that will sit in the email. So it comes in and we report.
Super. Committee reports. Code enforcement?
Nothing to report. We will have that discussion item next month regarding code that Foreman Hart was working on.
Super. Nothing on economic development? Good. Fire?
I haven't been, haven't met. I think some people are pretty smooth. Through the call up.
Meaning on Tuesday?
Well, there's the
They want to get
Okay.
Oh, then you have the bankbook coming up on the October 15th?
Yeah.
Saturday, October 15th, I think we've all got our presentations there. Personnel?
Not being to report at this time.
Police?
Nothing to report at this time, unless the chief has something he would like to draw.
Mosa?
Couple items later.
Rec?
Trustee Winston and myself, we will deliver a meeting in the past week. We've seen a youth soccer. They had very good attendance this year, about 30 more than last year, 570 this year. Softball playoffs have all ended. Only problem they had, the men wanted to play on pushing all field. And the women took that. So they were a little upset that they didn't have pushing all field to play on. Youth baseball tournament, August 4th, 56, they had to do fireworks, about 20 teams, went over very well.
about twenty teams, went over very well. Indoor lacrosse, didn't have a very good season, they canceled home games, but the team that was using the arena went out west in Canada and got the silver medal. So they did very well. And the agreement, the two-ten-year agreement with the power authority is currently, they give about a hundred and fifty-nine thousand dollars a year for the beach and other things, and this year they're requesting about sixty thousand more in this year.
Okay, so for new business, the ice goes in October first, so October third, they'll start evening rentals, shinny hockey skill and drills. The summer rec program, as we've talked about before, went really well this summer. They had the four locations, they had a good turnout of students, not as many as they usually do because of the Raider Academy with the district, but still quite a lot of children. The beach is closed, they packed it all up Labor Day weekend. The train and toy show will be September twenty-fifth from ten to six, and September twenty-sixth from ten to four. The cost is three dollars for twelve and up, and eleven and under are three.
So the sign is at five.
Oh, it's five? Okay, I thought they said three at the meeting. Okay, so five dollars. There is a fall project where they're painting the back wall of the arena that faces McDonald's, so they'll get the nice and spruce up, and that's all.
Thank you. Rescue squad, trustee Simpson and I met with them on the thirteenth, along with Karen. To date, they've had two thousand four hundred and sixty-five calls with a ninety-five percent rate answering for the year, they're averaging roughly three hundred to three fifty a month. So we signed a new ambulance contract, thankfully, well, I'm not sure if this is a correct statement any longer, all four vehicles up and running, or is one in the shop again?
We're running the best of our ability currently.
We also agreed that in November, we'll have kind of a review meeting where we kind of review what we've done this year, what we did good, what we didn't do good, and then kind of set out our goals for one, three, five years to come. We'll do that, go back there. That's all I got for that. Anything else?
No, just the fact that we were talking just a little bit ago, and the ambulances are in the process of being manufactured. And knock on wood, everything's going as planned currently.
Great, awesome. Street committee?
Okay, so there are lots of paving projects, as we've seen, so what's done so far looks great, and many of them are still close to being done, but the rain has halted some of that. Also, they've been working on keeping everything clean from streets, picking up brush, cleaning the walkways downtown. There were a few issues, such as repaired sewer on East Hatfield. Also, as far as water, there was a water leak on Bailey Road. They've been digging and replacing curb boxes, flushing valves, doing stakeouts. They are working with the new plant superintendent on updating paperwork and safety training, so that's good as well. Thank you for everyone there.